Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. Would you kindly stand to salute the flag and then remain standing for a moment of silence? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd ask that you please remain standing for a moment of silence for Eddie Cochran, who is a longtime member of the Finance Committee, Barbara Lutzen, who is a longtime schoolteacher of Home Economics at the junior high school, and then just recently, yesterday, I believe, Patricia Long, who is over a 30-year teacher, elementary school teacher in the Abingdon Public Schools, and as well as Alice Fopiano, who was a longtime friend of the elderly and was quite...
Anna.
Anna, I'm sorry, I'm thinking of her sister-in-law, Anna Fopiano. So would you kindly have a moment of silence for them? Before we get started with our public appointments, just a couple of issues. One, I know the last couple of selectmen's meetings, the CamTV for the people at home has been kicking out midway through our meeting, and from what I understand from Kevin Tochi at Cam, they had a problem with their playback server. They have since replaced that, so we're hopeful, based on the new system, that that will not be an issue, and we thank him for his attention to that matter. Secondly, just to remind everybody that there's a special town election on September 21st. The polls open eight to four, that's to fill the unexpired term of former selectman Damasio. That would be the... The papers are due August 5th at 5:00 p.m., and that would be for the remaining term until the April 2025 election, so it's about nine months, and that person would be selected given at the September 21st meeting. This past Thursday, all members of the Board of Selectmen were present when we awarded the Boston Post cane to Louise McKenzie of the Senior Santa Luncheon. Louise is officially the oldest resident of town, and when I handed her the Boston Post cane, I said, "It's tough for an elected official to tell a young lady that she's the oldest person in town," and then hand her a cane so she can hit you with it. Additionally, there was a selectman Woods coordinated a bench dedication for former high school teacher and coach Paul Byron that was held on Saturday. The one thing I do want to jump down to while we've got everybody's attention before we get into our appointments is that the sister-city designation with Abingdon-on-Thames in the United Kingdom. I have been going back and forth with the mayor of Abingdon. Now, Abington was named after Abing Dunn in the United Kingdom, and I'll just very briefly read this resolution that the selectmen had adopted previously that got the sister-city designation going. "From the Board of Selectmen, a resolution recognizing Abingdon-on-Thames County of Oxfordshire, United Kingdom as a sister city to the town of Abingdon, County of Plymouth Commonwealth of Massachusetts, United States of America. Whereas the town of Abingdon County of Plymouth, Massachusetts, United States of America was incorporated by an act of the General Code of the Province of Massachusetts Bay Colony on June 10, 1712. And whereas the town of Abingdon County of Plymouth, Massachusetts, United States of America was named after Countess Anne Venables Birdie, wife of the second Earl of Abing Dunn, as Lady Anne was the lady of the bedchamber to Her Majesty Anne by the grace of God, Queen of Great Britain, France and Ireland, defender of the faith. And whereas the decree approved by the Royal Governor Joseph Dudley, in gratitude for her ladyship's intercession and receiving, led his patent from the sovereign appointing him the royal governor, ordered that the town be incorporated and named Abing Dunn, however it was transcribed as Abington. Now therefore be it resolved by the Honorable Board of Selectmen of the town of Abingdon, County of Plymouth Commonwealth of Massachusetts, United States of America, that given the shared history of our communities, is hereby recognized that Abingdon-on-Thames County of Oxfordshire, United Kingdom is to be considered a sister city, and that this resolution is to be transmitted officially by Kevin R. Donovan, as chairman of the Abingdon Board of Selectmen, to the mayor and council of Abingdon-on-Thames County of Oxfordshire, United Kingdom, at a fitting time and place, and that the best wishes and goodwill of all the inhabitants of said Abingdon, so forth, are hereby extended to the inhabitants of Abingdon-on-Thames." This began the process. I've been in contact with the mayor of Abing Dunn, and actually, my wife and I are going over there at our own expense this summer, and we're going to be met by the mayor and councils. We're taking the train from London to a station near Abingdon. The mayor and councils will meet us, take us to a luncheon, we'll tour the town, we'll present the citation. I've also asked, if I could, the Abing Dunn Fire Brigade is part of the County of Oxfordshire. So I've been corresponding with the chief fire officer. He's going to make sure his staff is there to meet us, and I've been able to cobble together a few patches from the Abingdon Fire Department, and the police chief gave me some patches, and they're going to have emergency services people there. So we'll be able to pass those out. I've actually written a book on the history of the Abingdon Fire Department, about 180 pages that I'm going to present to them. But on that same day, we're taking this train a little bit farther north, and we're going to meet a Mark Dudfield, who, how he ended up with it, I don't know, but I will find out. The 1921 seagrave the Abingdon Fire Department had under its care and control here, he had it refurbished, and he has it in Warwickshire, England. So he's going to meet us at the train station at Well as well, give us a tour, a ride, and I hope to come back with plenty of pictures, providing I don't have an international incident that you'll see on CNN. So with that said, that's my little story there. Before we get into our public appointments, I do want to say this. As you can see, it's warm in this room. We don't have any air conditioner. Pardon me. And we do have a number of appointments. I had asked the town manager to inform everybody that I was going to limit you to 10 minutes each, only because, in the theory of things, when you, if you go to Congress, they limit how long you can speak, how long the members can speak. If you go to the Supreme Court, they limit how long the lawyers can speak. Recently, even Pope Francis came out and told his priest he didn't want the homilies more than eight minutes. So I'm going to be generous and give you an extra two. I'm going to time you, because it's warm in here, and, you know, I think we can get across our point in 10 minutes' time anyway. So with that said, I would like to bring up the county commissioners, Chairman Jared Balanzola and Commissioner Gray Hanley, to make a presentation on the APPA funds.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through your membership, now, this is a real dangerous test to have Commissioner Hanley and I first up on the 10 minutes, but we're going to give it in five. It is always a pleasure to be back here before you folks. We do just want to send the regrets of Commissioner Wright, as well as Treasurer O'Brien, they couldn't be here. Also, I spoke with Rep. Sullivan Almeida this afternoon. She sends her regrets, as does Senator Keenan. We're very grateful, again, for this continued partnership, and we do want to laud, so I'll M.B.A.C. your entire team here for the work that has been going on. We know that the project with Lockland especially has worked out well. We've given them their portion, so we're happy to give you your portion as well. And as this program continues to wind down, just for the edification of other folks at home, we did extend the deadline for committing those funds. I believe Abingdon already has submitted what they want to use the remainder of their funds on. We were doing it June 30th. We extended it to September 30th. We, again, like to talk about what that benefit is for dealing with us, that we can be flexible and respond to the needs of the member communities rather than having hard and fast deadlines. And, again, we're really, really proud of the partnerships. But before I say anything else, I'd like to just quickly turn it over to Commissioner Hanley to say a few words, and then, you know, happy to take questions and round it off with a picture, and then, to borrow a congressional term, yield the remainder of our time to someone else.
Well, I'll follow the chairman's edict, and I will make sure that the county is efficient. My job today is to actually bring the regrets of Congressman Lynch, specifically with Kears and APPA. If it wasn't for his support, the county most likely wouldn't have taken those funds, and most likely you wouldn't have received the benefit that all the other county-driven programs have given us. So with that, again, judicial use of this money, one-time needs, capital needs, the residents of town are going to benefit because you don't have to borrow to meet those capital needs. So, again, thank you, and I applaud you, Scott, for submitting.
Very good. Thanks. Do you want to...
Thank you. All right. So, yeah, if we could just do a quick picture. We gave Scott the real one, so the real one is in hand. And how did we do on time, Mr. Chairman?
Yep, yeah, you're still... You're good. Yeah, do it right up for you.
Right up here?
Yeah. Good.
This is my job. Anyone want to be the country?
No. That's all right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Very good. Thanks very much, Jared.
Thank you.
Next up, we introduce the police co-response clinician, Tipton Postel and Sergeant Feely.
Good evening, folks, and on behalf of the men and women of the Abingdon Police Department, I'm ecstatic to have the opportunity tonight to officially welcome and introduce our department's new community care clinician, Julie Grenau. Julie joins our department with experiences as a co-clinician, response clinician with the towns of Norton and Rainham Police Department, as well as the City of Brockton Police Department. And through our partnership with the community counseling of Bristol County, it is our goal to help redirect individuals committing nonviolent offenses from the criminal justice systems to a more appropriate community-based behavioral health services. Julie will be partnering with our officers in the field to assist with providing those we serve and have interactions with facing mental health crisis and trauma with an immediate resource. She will also follow up on cases and referrals in an attempt to provide those in need to treatment providers and services. And this program was made available through a comprehensive grant project committed, completed and submitted by Sergeant Brian Feely, who joins us here tonight. The grant through the Massachusetts Department of Mental Health will cover the cost of the clinical services provided by Julie, as well as her equipment, and also provide with advanced crisis intervention training for our officers. We're grateful and very proud of Sergeant Feely's work on this project, as well as the support of this board, the town manager, the Abingdon Veterans Agent, the Abingdon Public Health Nurse, and the Abingdon Public School Nurse, who all supported this project. And with that, I will allow Julie to make just a few remarks, and if there's any questions for Julie or Sergeant Feely on the grant, we're more than happy to help entertain those. Thank you all.
Julie, go right ahead.
Hi, so my name is Julie Grenau. I'm a longtime resident, actually, of Abingdon. I grew up here from the age of three to probably about 23, until I went to grad school. I went to Simmons for grad school. I've been a co-response clinician and a clinician with the Community Counseling of Bristol County Mobile Crisis Team for almost eight years. I've been with co-response for about four, Brockton Police specifically, for about three. So I'm excited for my partnership here with Abingdon and to learn the city or town a little bit better from this perspective and be able to work with the community.
Very good. Well, welcome, Julie.
Thank you.
I want to commend Sergeant Feely. Clearly, this is, as I said in other forums, as society changes, I'm happy to see that the police department clearly is changing with that, and I think it's a program that is well worth it. And, you know, because of the way the criminal justice system has worked, it's probably, you can diffuse a lot of this from a mental health standpoint versus tying up the court system and the offices. And I want to commend Sergeant Feely for his abilities as far as writing the grant and organizing everything. So on behalf of the board, we're happy that you're here. We want to thank you, welcome you, and look forward to a productive endeavor. Thanks very much. Very good. Thank you. Next up, Paul Mollica, Presidential Drive. Paul?
Thank you for getting me on the agenda. I came before the board, you know, probably one and a half, two years ago, about speeding on Presidential Drive, and with me are a number of the residents on Presidential. Originally, the subdivision's probably like 36 years old. It's 54 lots in total, between Presidential, Van Buren, and McKinley. And the width of Presidential is actually wider than the width of Hancock Street. Originally designed was to put a strip down the middle, which never happened. The subdivision, first phase was when things were going pretty well, then the economy went to a downturn, and that got phased out. But when I came last time, we're looking for some help, and what the town did do, I was thinking about recommended like speed limit signs, speed bumps, radar, speed controls, and the town come back with putting a bike lane down Presidential, two strips down the middle, and then a strip on the other side. And I think that worked for like a half hour when people went for the first time down. And since then, speeding is, it's a risk. Over the course of the 36 years, there might be four or five original homeowners stealing houses. The rest of the houses have been turned over. There's a ton of young families with young kids, and speeding's an issue. So what I'm requesting is putting speed limit signs at the beginning of Presidential and where Presidential turns off from Linwood. Most GPSs now track on your GPS speed limits in terms of shows on your dashboard. On Hancock Street, there's a 40 mile per hour speed limit sign close to Presidential. There's no speed limit signs on Presidential. So as you're driving down Presidential, you get down probably fairly long into the street before it flips off. So it gives the illusion that 40 miles per hour is the speed zone. As far as speed bumps concern, I've been at this probably for 20, 30 years, when kids were small, and at that point, the speed bumps were asphalt, were permanent. DPW didn't want it because couldn't plow during the winter, et cetera, et cetera. But driving through Braintree two years ago, on Jefferson Street, which is where the golf course is, there's a speed bump right there to slow traffic down because it's a long street. I called the Police Department of Braintree today and ended up with a DPW chief, and he said, "I was cutting through Braintree a week or so ago, and one of the streets over by Forest, it's a cut through to Colombian Street. It's probably a street the length of Presidential. There are two sets of speed bumps." And the information I got from the police chief, Assistant Police Chief in Braintree two years ago, where you place the speed bump is important. So on Jefferson, it's a long street, the speed bump is probably 200 feet into the street, then the street goes another half a mile. If people pass the speed bump, then they're off to the races. The other street I drove through, the cut through two weeks ago, is a speed bump like a third of the way in, another third of the way, so you permanently slow down. The DPW chief also gave me the name of who sells them, to find out what the cost is. And the speed bumps are manufactured, one company is Traffic Logic, and the heights of the actual speed bump are either three or four inches, the lengths are either seven feet or 14 feet, and the cost is somewhere between 200 bucks and $500. In addition to that, you'd have a sign that says "speed bump," et cetera. So it's relatively inexpensive to do that. So I'm recommending two things, the speed limit signs at the beginning of Presidential and at the end where Linwood is, that can't be a lot of money, and two sets of speed bumps, you know, probably a third of the way down on Presidential, and then maybe 60% down, a little bit further on Presidential, that will slow the traffic down. In the event that the town doesn't have any money, we'll look to fundraise to pay the expense for that. So we had a lot of interest in the radar, speed controls, I looked, that was like about, I think, about a couple thousand bucks, and at that point, we figured we'd try the road signs first. But we had a lot of support in the event that it's important enough for the people in the street to, if we have to raise the money, we'll do that. So I'll open it up for questions. There's other people here from the street, if they want to say something, please do. But if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer as best I can.
I know that Hancock Street's speed limit's going to get lowered tonight, down to 30. I know you guys have had a problem with that. I'm not for speed bumps, so if we're taking a vote, I'm going to vote against it. So I grew up on Lincoln Street, so if we put them at Presidential, we'd have to put them at Lincoln, and I don't live on Lincoln anymore and haven't for a long time. I just think it's a bad precedent personally. I understand the need for it because I moved to Lincoln Street when I was four years old and lived there till I was 16.
Well, we've tried, yeah, we've tried everything else, and I think it's, Presidential is more of a cut through than...
Not Lincoln Street. I'll listen, I'll disagree with you there. Not that, I know you, I respect the problem you guys have up there. You're definitely not a bigger cut through than Lincoln Street. I'm 61 years old, I lived here since I was four. You have a cut through problem, there's absolutely no doubt. But Lincoln Street's the biggest cut through we have in Abingdon, in my opinion.
So if we've tried the other solutions, this is the only one left. I think we should definitely...
Yeah, I'm just giving...
I'm in favor of doing it.
No, I respect what you guys want to, I'm just, I don't want anyone walking out of the room wondering where I'm at. I will vote no on, and not on just on your street. I want to make it clear.
Braintree has, Braintree has eight locations, different streets, that they have speed bumps on because of speeding.
Plymouth does, too.
And it works. So it used to be they were permanent, and people said, "I don't want to do that," for whatever reason. The other thing that Braintree does, too, is when a resident comes before the board for a speed bump, they require a survey be sent to everybody on the street to get a unanimous vote to see if everybody's in agreement. Because sometimes they say, "Well, I don't want it on my street," but I sent a survey out two years ago about coming to the board with solutions as to speeding, and one of them was the speed bumps. Of the, 80% of the residents on Presidential, McKinley, and Van Buren signed it. The other 20%, I tried three times, they weren't home. So I think, you know, getting a survey, getting it signed would be an indication that everybody's in support, which I firmly believe that based on the kids, the age of the families, that's not an issue.
I'd like to see traffic enforcement first.
Well, I was going to suggest, based on what you were saying, I think probably the first thing I'd like to see is, I agree with you as far as the speed limit signs and the enforcement, and I believe the chief has already started that process with his staff as far as putting Presidential on the list to step up enforcement there. I would like to see how the speed limit signs, and what you're saying, I think, makes sense in terms of, you know, the geographics of it, and step up the enforcement before we go to speed bumps.
We've tried enforcement, Kevin, for like a number of years, so, and that hasn't worked. It hasn't worked.
But I think, at the end of the day...
So when I called to get on the agenda, the police are out there for like a couple of weeks, then they're gone, all right? So it doesn't work. So nothing we've tried so far hasn't worked, and we're entering the summer, kids are just out of school, and it's just too much of a risk not to try the speed bumps. Why not try the speed bump, see if it makes sure it works? If it doesn't, pull them up, it's minimal expense.
Yeah, I think, well, the idea of trying to coordinate to get them in, and I, the only problem I have right now with speed bumps is not only our situation, but we've had other requests all around town, you know, of people that have inquired about that before. And I would prefer, from my standpoint, to look at, try the speed limit sign and then the enforcement, and see how we do with that. I really, I understand what you're saying, Paul, and I can appreciate it, but looking at the global picture, we're going to take care of the issue of Hancock Street tonight and do enforcement up there. So I think if we do targeted enforcement between Hancock, Presidential, you know, then we're getting that message, and we're getting the people that are cutting through, and, you know, I would prefer to see it that way before we get to the speed limit field.
All right, well, that hasn't worked, and we've tried that 10 years.
My problem, I just want to say, my problem's going to be, do I think it will help? It probably won't, but we'll have to do them all over town.
Braintree has a location that works, so...
Let me finish, Paul. I respect that, but I'm not willing to do that. I grew up on the busiest street in Abingdon. I respect the problem you have up there. I think the street's too wide.
It is, it is, but that's...
You have one of the widest streets in Abingdon, and I am, with new families coming in, I would be for putting the speed bump.
Let me ask a question. So Abingdon doesn't have any speed bumps on any streets, right? Other towns use it, and they use it effectively. Why not? Why not try it and use Presidential as the case study and see if it works?
I'm not willing to put speed bumps out. I'd rather send the police up there and write every single person up that they pull over. And you and I both know, if we pull over 20 people in a day, what the problem is, right?
Well, if people...
No, but answer my question, or answering yours. You understand what the problem is if we put the police up there and pull 20 people over in one day, right? At least half of them are the people that live up there.
I don't think that's going to happen.
You didn't say it's going to happen, I'm saying that's what does happen.
I don't think it's going to happen on Presidential.
Okay, I'm not knocking people on Presidential, you're missing my point. I'm saying, we do it up there, we have to do it everywhere.
Well, I'm saying that you should use it as a case study, because other locations probably warrant the same thing. If you've got a ton of kids that are out for school, they're out on the street, and, you know, ball runs down their driveway, they're after the ball, and a car's coming by, you know? It isn't, if it means an inconvenience for somebody coming down the street, they're slowing down, that's what we're trying to do.
I understand that. But my position is, where do we stop that? If we have 150 streets in Abingdon, are we going to do 140 of them?
I would say with service streets, it should be done, should be done.
Okay, well, I respect your opinion, I disagree with it.
Why don't we do this? Why don't we ask, we'll deal with the speed limit signs and the enforcement, and for our, we're going to be meeting on July 8th to do interdepartmental transfers. And let's see what the statistics say for July 8th.
So we'll be, when's the next meeting?
It'll be July 8th.
So we'll come back on July 8th and...
It's going to be a morning meeting, though.
That's okay, I'll be there.
So, and then we can see what the statistics say.
Okay, but nothing to date has worked, and we've tried this, and resistance is the same as, people have the same opinion as you, Rog, and I thought the same thing. But I drove through Braintree, and the thing works. And it's not like it's Hancock Street, the street is too wide, it's never going to be narrowed, the bike lane and stuff like that helped a little bit, but, you know, my opinion is, it sounds good, but I'd strongly recommend that we try the speed bumps.
Okay. Again, yes, sir. Quickly.
Tom Burke, 254 Presidential. Been there since the beginning, about 30, 35 years. I guess the issue I have, people understand that speed bumps do work, and certain towns have done it very effectively. The issue I would think is, what is the criteria, establishing a criteria for which streets would be beneficial to have speed bumps? There must be some criteria relative to size of the street, the amount of the traffic. They didn't just throw, you know, something against the wall, "Let's see if it stuck." They had some criteria in Braintree and Plymouth to say certain streets will, and certain streets don't, to your point. And I think there must be some criteria somewhere that says, "A street with this characteristic relative to traffic with number of children and alike that would benefit from that." And instead of 100% coverage with speed bumps, it would come to a, some, you know, scientific number that one could then look at to say, "This will satisfy the criterion as well." So that's my suggestion at that point.
Okay, thank you. I think if, unless there's an objection from the board, can we ask the town manager to see about the speed limit signs and ask the chief to step up enforcement so that we can have a report for our July 8th meeting?
I'll make that as a motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor can signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, so vote it. Thank you.
Excellent.
Okay, the landfill update.
Evening.
How are you? If not, all those in favor kind of signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, so vote it. Thank you.
Excellent.
Okay, the landfill update.
Evening.
How are you?
Good thanks. I'm Steve Wright with San Born Head.
Okay.
We're a geo-environmental engineering company. I've been working with Abington for many years related to the landfill, certainly, going back to probably early, like, two thousand and three, I think. So the handout that you have, I think to maybe walk you through this as quickly, to give you an update, would be to look at that first figure that's attached called landfill site plan.
Mm-hmm.
So I'll just describe some of these colors on here, which I think will give you a little bit of the background on this site. So the landfill in the landfill property, this twenty point eight acres, is everything with all these colors that's surrounded by this dashed black line. The landfill itself is this tighter black line that runs around, it's like a gourd shape. You've got the front part of the landfill and the back part. And the orange colors are, the, the orange color on the right-hand side, that small slip of orange, right off of Groveland Street, that's what started the administrative consent order with Mass DEP. So there was Northeast Modular Homes back in the day, they were building houses off of Groveland. They wanted to develop, put a house on that parcel. And the surveyor came out and said, I think the landfill's encroaching on this property. Told that to the property owner. The property owner went straight to Mass DEP. And Mass DEP came out, did a site visit and said, yeah, it does look like you have an encroachment here. That led to DEP talking to the town. That ultimately led to an administrative consent order. But it also kicked off what had been a dormant period for Abington, going back to nineteen seventy-five, because Abington had done some work at that site in seventy-five. Never got things documented with the state, and so the state came back with that and said, you really need to address this entire site in accordance with the current regulations. The regulations that were in place when this all happened, two thousand and four vintage, they're essentially the same regulations that are in place now. So that administrative consent order established timelines for the town to assess and close the landfill. And at the time, when we were looking into this, and my, the company I'm with now, at the time it was SEA Consultants that I was with, we did the initial site assessment, looking into the history of the site. And we had to do a lot of test pits, because if there's this encroachment, what's the extent of the encroachment on these different, on the one parcel? You see this larger parcel, which is all old news now. That was the old T-two driving range. That's on the left-hand side, it's the larger swath of land. So there was that encroachment that was Northeast Modular, but there was a bigger encroachment that was the landfill extending onto the old Newcombe property. And the Newcombe property, I mean, I think the town was given the right to fill on that from the late nineteen sixties. But they had to reconcile this because you didn't own the property on which the landfill was located. So it all came to light through the consent order process. So we did, under that consent order process, early stages, we did this assessment work. And that initial phase of evaluating things, we came out with, this is the limit of the landfill, it's eleven and a half acres. And what you see in the colors here, I mean, I won't say the colors, but the, the white shaded color there, that's an issue that we've got in front of DEP right now. That's where, if you went out to the site and you looked at the landfill, the landfill's going to go down at a slope, it's going to hit the wetlands and everything will level off. Those white areas that are shown on here at the edges of the landfill are in the wetland. But you wouldn't know it to look at it. It's all flat, there's no sense of slope in there. But it's part of the test pitting that we were required to do. That's a complicating factor when it gets into closure, to see what we have to do about a wetlands encroachment. But to put that aside, that's what that white area is on here. So out of the eleven and a half acres, there's about one point six acres of, of wetland encroachment. That information, that information's been shared with Mass DEP. So we, we sent them an initial site assessment report. That led to, you have to scope out a comprehensive site assessment report, that's the next phase of the process. We did that, we submitted that report back in two thousand and fourteen to Mass DEP. That's where we actually put monitoring wells in, did monitoring at the site and get an environmental read on the, on what's happening up there. Everything came back really minimal impact. Doesn't mean you, you get away with not having to do anything, because under the solid waste regulations, you have to cap. That's like the default corrective action. So we have been waiting, however, and somewhat, the town has been willing to wait at the time of two thousand and fourteen onward, till DEP put this in its priority list to review. And it admittedly sat there a lot longer than we would have expected. But more recently, which was now two years ago, almost to the day, the selectmen were interested in the concept of bringing impacted soils in at the site for the purposes of helping defray the cost of capping. If that money, if that revenue that came in could deal with the capping cost. That was a concept that was actually, we looked at even back in two thousand and six and seven, because that was an issue at the time. How are we going to take on this financial burden? What are ways to defray that cost? The second figure that you see after this figure is a site plan, is a plan, a concept plan of nine very conceptual plans that we put together for public meetings that went on in two thousand and six and seven, to look at, well, what could we do out at the landfill for options for bringing in either no impacted soils, but there's some post-closure use activities that the town would want to look at, versus bringing in a fair amount of impacted soils that the site can support with lesser degree of post-closure use, or, that's what it's called. So that would be composting, continuing the composting operations out there would be considered a post-closure use. At the time, there was interest in, what if we put a ball field out there? Could we do something like that? So that was looked at in the host of options. This option three, back in two thousand and seven, was formally voted on after, I think it was two prior public meetings to just vet these concepts, between a joint meeting in the Board of Health and the Board of Selectmen. And they adopted this option. And it's part of a, at the time, and it's still the same guidance policy, if you want to bring in impacted soils, you have these public meetings so the public's aware of what the town's considering. So this select, this option was selected. This option, granted, it was very, it's conceptual, but it lays out the potential of a hundred and fifty thousand yards of soils that you could bring into the site. This was done before we submitted, well before we submitted the, the latest report to Mass DEP. They are aware of it, of this concept. But we tabled that because it's all tied into the next steps that we outlined in that report we submitted, that comprehensive site assessment report in two thousand and fourteen. When I got together with the, the board a couple of years ago, they said, can you try to find out from DEP if we can get this thing moving? Because the soils market, we don't want to miss out if we can, if we can actually bring soils in here and really take advantage of this, this option. And at the time, the soils market was more valuable, if you will, two years ago than it was back when we looked at these numbers. So totally disregard any of the numbers that, those are just the exact numbers that we gave the town in two thousand and six. As a comparison, the number that we had back in two thousand and six for soils that we were carrying for a revenue potential was somewhere like seven dollars a ton. The value of soils right now is about fifty dollars a ton, if it's what's called COM ninety-seven soils. So the soils price is really going up.
Okay, I guess, just as to synopsize, so right now, the, the request is that DEP wetlands people or the solid waste people?
Solid waste.
All right. Is wetlands involved in this at all?
Not yet, but they are, DEP, we've given them plenty of information, Mass DEP, solid waste.
Okay.
Your local wetlands, Concom? No.
No. What I'm asking is, because I've been involved in capping a landfill in Rockland, and solid waste at DEP and wetlands at DEP sometimes didn't mix together well.
Yep.
And I've had, gone through that experience. So I guess my question, what, let me just cut to the chase. What we're looking for is, we're building a new fire headquarters in DPW facility and looking to prepare the site. We've got a lot of material, and we're looking for the possibility of using that up at the landfill. So I guess the reason we asked you here tonight is to determine whereabouts, who at DEP, where does it sit, and whether that's something that we, we would be available to use. And that's a discussion maybe we can have offline with the town manager to make that determination. But I guess, from our standpoint, okay, I get the history of it now, and I think from, from a technical aspect, you know, whether we need to, or maybe we need to sit with you to determine whether we can use those soils up there and if it's just solid waste that does this, or does wetlands come involved in the whole thing?
Wetlands will come in, but I would suspect that wetlands, only by virtue of getting a copy of the notice of intent filing. It's really going to be, it's going to be a local issue, to the extent that Concom gets triggered, you know, the filing for notice, order of conditions. I don't think you're going to get any other real feedback from wetlands at this point. The, the reason why I'm talking about wetlands in these white areas here, and just so you guys have an, an understanding of what the DEP solid waste people have in front of them, they're, under this administrative consent order, you have a, a timeline without dates right now that says, thou shalt cap this landfill. It's fallen off the priority list with Mass DEP, but it's coming back on now. And it's coming back on because the town is trying to coax them into paying attention so the soils issue, but the soils issue isn't your DPW fire department job. That's coming up now. And if it, if the landfill offers you an opportunity to avoid a cost, that's great. To me, that job, from what I know about the job, in terms of the quantity of soil, and I don't even know if that entire quantity of soils would all go to the landfill, it's a, it's a subset of this hundred and fifty thousand we're talking about. So I asked DEP, in preparation for this meeting, is there an issue of bringing in a subset of soils that's not part of a larger project, not part of a contractor taking over the job and then immediately turning it into capping? Just a, a short term, because the town has a need, could we, in concept, do it? Where the material that's at the generating site might need to get over to the landfill pretty quickly, like maybe in February? And they said, Solid Waste said, yes, we can do that. You're probably on a tight timeframe, because they need, Mass DEP, when you go into that landfill and you put those soils in there, it's an inactive landfill right now. It's going to turn it active. And it's going to start to put some boundaries on the, the DEP's expectations on the town. No matter what that quantity of soil is, all right, you've got to manage that soil this way. Because we look at that soil, as much as it's soil, to whatever degree it's impacted, if, if, whatever it's degree it's impacted, you're going to have to make sure that there's no runoff that's going into the abutting wetlands, you're going to have to confine it on-site, infiltrate into the landfill. So they're going to want to see information. But the bottom line is, it's an option. They're not going to stand in your way. If that triggers in the short term, we're going to be within a buffer zone of the wetlands. So we're going to have to file locally. And we get a, we get an order of conditions. And the Mass DEP gets a copy, the wetlands and waterways people get a copy of that application. I don't see them intervening. I, I don't think they'd have any issue, as long as we comply at the local level. The, the bigger project, in terms of the landfill itself and these white areas that I showed on that figure, has been something that I've been on DEP about for quite some time, that I was hoping I'd have clarification on through their approval of the comprehensive site assessment, which we should be getting next month. So they've told me that. Is, is trying to get their confirmation that we can leave the wetland fill material in place. It's not like, from what we found through tra, uh, test pitting, it's not hefty trash bags of MSW and it's a, it's, it's a lot of like wood, wood waste, maybe a few tires. And to disrupt all that seems pretty disruptive and costly. So what we're trying to get from Mass DEP.
When are you going to get that information?
Well, that's, we're probably going to have to get our CSA approval and then push on that point again with them.
All right, why don't we do this then? Because there's still a lot of technical aspects to work on. Why don't we sit down with you, the town manager, and we can, we can talk about, you know, the intricacies of it and moving forward and timing more than anything.
Sure.
And then we can go forward, at least we get the, the overview of where we stand on the whole thing. And then we can try and see what the concept will be, you know, moving forward.
Yeah, and how it leads into your immediate project needs and things like that.
Exactly, yeah. Great, very good, thanks very much.
All right. Okay.
Any questions?
No.
Very good, thanks very much.
Thanks so much.
Thanks, Scott.
Okay, the audit of this. You know the drill.
Absolutely. Thank you all. Nice to see you all again, chairman, members of the board, Tom, Ike. We're here to talk about the twenty-three audit. I'll move efficient, wearing a coat and tie in here is, I agree with you, it's a bit on the warm side.
Why don't we go, I, I know, can you?
I can go any way you like.
Yeah, let's start with the management letter.
Absolutely.
And then I've reviewed the financials, I have just two questions.
Okay, perfect.
On the financials, but I think, I would like to pull in on the management letters and then, you know, rather than go through the whole.
Absolutely.
If you don't mind.
Nope, nope, mind at all. What I'll quickly just say is that your other two reports, which are the, the schedule of expenditures of federal laws and your financials, did receive unmodified opinions, which are the best you can get. They're clean reports. Management letter, coming from fiscal twenty-two into fiscal twenty-three, we had seven comments that carried forward, of which three of them, two are completely resolved, one is partially resolved, the town has already been moving, they may have already moved now, I'm not sure, ma, the OPEB funds to Plymouth County, which we, as a firm, we have a number of clients that have done so and have, have seen pretty good results. So I think that's a pretty good move there. The four comments that I'm considering unresolved deal with some reconciliations in the timing thereof of cash and receivables and such. Now, what I'd like to say is, I think from your town manager's office to your town accountant's office to your treasurer-collector's office, I feel everybody's working well together. I think the last couple of years, they've run into situations where neither office has had enough staffing, hasn't had, there's, there's been some mitigating issues there that have caused the day-to-day operations to be kind of pushed back a little bit. And once we kind of were able to sort of, our team as well as your finance team here jump in, work together, you know, in the springtime, really get through everything, we were able to get through it. In speaking with your, your accountant, your treasurer-collector, as far as the staffing levels and what's been happening thus far in twenty-four, I would expect the vast majority of these to be gone for this next audit.
All right. Let me just say, because we did this discussion the last time.
Yes.
My main concern was the, the reconciliation process, and it comes up again. So I guess, and I understand what you're saying, and I thought, you know, going forward, we have something addressed. The thing that bothers me, quite frankly, is the fact that we didn't close the books till March of two thousand and twenty-four, which in my mind should have been closed in September, I think, in a perfect world. I thought we were working towards that. So what I would like to see, from that standpoint, as far as the board's concerned, is that we're going to go on summer hours, but when we come back in September, I want to put on the agenda a report on each meeting where we stand with reconciliation, not only with cash, but with the health, health trust, to know, to get a handle on how we are doing. I know there seemed to be a backlog before, I had mentioned this to the town manager, they, they dealt with some outside help and, and to try and coordinate that and move forward. The only thing I'm going to say is, this is Groundhog Day for me, because thirty years ago, when Roger and I sat here.
We did.
We had problems, and the problems weren't addressed, and it just exacerbated itself. And I will be damned if I'm going to sit here and let that happen again. So from that standpoint, I understand what you're saying, I know we're working towards it, but I want to keep a handle on this, and therefore I will have put on the agenda beginning September, for every meeting, where do we stand with reconciliations? What months have been reconciled? The health trust moving forward, because I don't want to lose sight of that. Does anybody have any questions on the management report for the?
Nope.
in September for every meeting, where do we stand with reconciliations? What months have been reconciled? The health trust moving forward, because I don't want to lose sight of that. Does anybody have any questions on the management report for the-
Nope.
If not, can I turn your attention to the financials?
Absolutely.
Just two questions I have. In reviewing the financials, and I don't know if this is just a matter of accounting that I'm not picking up on or because of whatever the basis of accounting is-
All right, all right.
-it may be something that is, was booked at the close of year but worked itself out. But specifically in the enterprise funds on sewer, there was a deficit of $30,777 and in the cable access, a deficit of $65,585. Is that simply something that was, was that equipment at depreciation or is it an actual deficit?
It is actually now, what, great point-
On the page 14 of your financials.
Yes. Your water and sewer are what we refer to as enterprise funds, business-type activities. They are essentially, in your financial statements, you mentioned different bases of accounting. Your governmental funds have three bases of accounting within these financial statements. The enterprise, business-type funds only have one, full accrual basis. A business-type activity is supposed to walk and talk like its own operations. Essentially, charges for services and, and any other type of operating revenues that come in should be enough to cover both capital and operating costs of that activity. Quite frankly, you know, a $30,000 loss, a $65,000 in cable really is, that's pretty close in our world, you know? To get a debt on is probably pretty tough. But to your point, or to your question, excuse me, because these are full accrual statements, they not only include the depreciation on capital assets, which is a non-cash, so that, that exacerbates your loss down below, it includes your net pension liability accruals, which really aren't in, on the books. So these are, are full, these are, lack of a better way to say it, worst-case scenario, financials that include everything.
So it's all included.
It's all, 100% all-inclusive.
That answers my question.
Okay.
In terms of the overall financials, I thought they looked pretty good.
I do as well, to be honest with you.
My only concern obviously was on the management letter, but other than that, the OPEB, clearly that's a battle we all have to face.
That's, that's the elephant in the room in the state.
And we're going to have to go forward with it, but from that standpoint, hopefully, moving forward, we can address that. But other than that, any questions from the board?
Do we need a motion to accept this, or?
No, he's just, if you want to, you can.
Motion to accept the financial, the auditors' report and management letter.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
I'll oppose, so voted. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, 10 Railroad Street update, building commissioner and fire chief. What is the commissioner's going through?
Hope you don't have a first day.
And you heard the buzz that go off, right?
I'll need two minutes, and I'll get out of the way. So I've supplied you folks, good evening by the way, supplied you folks with a vanilla folder here that's got some information regarding a lot of enforcement efforts that have been gone through our departments since I've taken over the leadership role. The first two pages, you'll find that it's labeled 10 Railroad. It's a bit of a timeline. The first page will be the most recent. The second page is from when I took over leadership, July, excuse me, January 1st of 2024. You know, that property, 10 Railroad, has a very seasoned pass, you know, a lot of concerns from the community. It's a vacant property, high-hazard construction, and it's been on the radar for some, quite some years. Before I became the full-time building commissioner here for the community, I did serve as a part-time building inspector here. So I did have some exposure of, of some of the concerns that were going on there between, in the building department as well as the fire department. When I did come over here full-time, I hyper-focused on jumping into the problem properties, the blighted properties, things like that, to kind of bring some stabilization to the community and solve some of the concerns. By looking at the affidavit here, we've had many calls out to the property for flying debris, repairs to be made, building to be safe. And you can see, you know, it's a substantial list here of communication back and forth where I'd reach out to them under due, you know, due process. And part of that is, you reach out for communication, you wait for the return communication, and to see the effects of, you know, are they going to make the repairs or are they not going to make the repairs?
Where do they stand in that phase? Are they, do you have any outstanding orders for 10 Railroad?
I have, the most recent, we've sent out about $15,000 worth of citations-
Yeah.
...since I've taken over in the last six months.
Have they addressed, where are they?
They have. They're in basic minimum compliance right now.
Okay.
Enough where I, you know, it would be considered or could be construed as discriminatory enforcement. Every time I reach out there, there's a, one a language barrier and two a time barrier there. It's, the property is currently owned by a foreign entity out of Beijing, China. So my enforcement orders, all my communication have to go, you know, via email and wait for the turnaround on the time. We've had some liaisons over there that have been somewhat helpful. Really helpful is a gentleman named Charlie that has been in there for years, you know, kind of taking care of the place. As of late, he's decided to retire, and so we've lost him as a liaison for the building.
All right. Are they, are they responsive to you then?
They are now.
All right. What about sale? Is they-
There was a pending sale. It has unfortunately fallen through.
Okay.
Due to some issues there with some, some soil issues there that they did quite the inspection over there at DEP.
Has DEP closed the file on that or they have?
It's still an open file.
Meaning you can't disturb it or they have jurisdiction?
They have jurisdiction as of right now.
In the courtyard or in the building?
The courtyard and in the basement of the structure itself.
Okay.
So they're active, open test pits now that they're monitoring, and it's a continuation of testing going on there. A couple of possible buyers went in there, brought their own engineers and their own scientists in there, and they've come up with the same results, so.
Okay.
As of right now, it's kind of a stagnant structure, but-
All right. Structurally, on the interior, I know at one point didn't they start to do some rehab work? Did they cut any structural beams?
No. So the stability structural-wise is 100% in there now.
Okay.
The biggest concern that I had, as well as the fire department, you know, I'll defer to, you know, Fire Chief Glenn to give the update on that, but the heat system controls the fire suppression system. So when that goes down, it's a massive issue for the community.
Right.
So there has been an enormous amount of enforcement and supervision on that property from before when I was part-time to full-time. We've sent out probably close to 20 enforcement orders and now eight violations and citations. So they, once they receive the citations, they answer very quickly and get over there.
All right. So from, from your standpoint, as far as the building goes, you've got orders, but they're responding to you?
Correct.
And there's no structural, you feel as though that they're up to code in terms of the structure itself, absent those orders?
Correct.
Okay. Chief, as it relates to, I know in the wintertime, there was a question that the boiler, the guy that was doing the boiler, if he doesn't maintain the boiler, clearly if the sprinklers freeze, you know?
Correct.
It's, are you satisfied that they've taken proper?
This past year, yeah. I've been involved with this building since my days of being a captain and a deputy, a chief. The biggest issue is, like you said, is wintertime with heat. We usually start in July, start reminding them about making sure we get this done, make sure we get this done. And then we usually sweat bullets usually around Halloween to November and think, oh boy, are they going to get this thing done. Commissioner's been a huge help this past year with them getting temporary heat in there. It worked out, we didn't have a tough winter, so it worked out well. Captain Carty and myself actually tore the building a week ago with Charlie, the representatives in there. Nothing's changed structurally in there for us as far as anything goes. Fire department, the sprinkler system's up and operational, are the smoke detectors, any type of notification systems, operational, they keep up with it. As far as they have Charlie there, we have confidence in that, and he's easily reached if that's the case. But from fire department standpoint, they're, they're meeting every requirement they need.
And do they, I'm assuming they have insurance? Do their underwriters come out at all?
That I'm not, I'm not familiar with one way or another. That's, that's something that I think through the state we can trace. I, I'm not sure.
Okay. So, but the bottom line after all of this then is that it's still, I thought for a while there, it appeared to be that it was going to be transfer ends, but from what you're saying?
Unfortunately, you know, there's been a lot of folks that have come through, a lot of interested parties, but at the last minute, you know, the-
It falls.
Yeah, 11th hour, it kind of dissolves one reason or another, which adds concern for us because we, you know, have the, the thought that, you know, something positive might go through and at least have somebody in there to occupy, to be working on it so that, you know, it doesn't put such a enormous strain on, on our departments.
Yeah, well, not only the strain, but the fear.
Right. But I will say that structurally it's sound, as far as we know, that all the protection, fire protection, fire suppressions up and, up in order, heat system works. They now know that there is zero leniency moving forward, so they will get one violation notice and the next move will be go right to court.
Okay. Very good. Any questions from the board?
No, I noticed that they have strapping up. Looks like they've been working on the outside lately.
It's not the prettiest thing, but it's the minimum required, you know, by code. And again, to, you know, have them do anything more, ask anything more of that would be discriminatory enforcement.
But at least they're responding now.
Correct.
Perfect.
Great.
I'm set.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Of good night.
Thank you.
All right. Approval of the minutes of June 10th?
Motion to approve.
Motion made, is there a second?
I'll second.
Oh, any discussion? If not, all those in favor can only signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, or was opposed or voted. Hancock Street speed limit, you will remember, we've had discussions with the residents on Hancock Street at the 2023 annual town meeting. The town voted favorably on Article 15 to accept the provisions of Chapter 90, Section 17(c), which would allow the Board of Selectmen to reduce the speed limit to 25 miles per hour. You've heard the concerns of the residents, we don't have any leeway, from my reading of the statute, it's, it would be 25 miles an hour. So is there discussion or a motion from the board?
I'll make a motion, we lower the speed limit to 25 miles an hour.
On all of Hancock Street and direct that the DPW director put up signs accordingly as soon as feasible-
As soon as possible.
And notify the chief of police.
Yes. And so everyone knows, they're putting a turnaround about at the Chestnut Street end, so that's going to hopefully slow things down, but it needs to be slowed. Paul made a good point about it being 40 miles an hour on 10 o'clock.
Yeah.
It has an effect up there, so.
Okay, motion made, is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor can only signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed or voted. You have a list of appointments before you for positions, people that have vacancies in positions, that we can incorporate the entire list unless anybody would like to accept any one of those, otherwise we'll take them as a group, is there-
Motion to approve the appointments?
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? If not, all those in favor can only signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, or was opposed or voted. Renewal of the commercial garage licenses, you have before you a listing of the commercial garage licenses that are up for renewal. We can take them as a block vote.
They're all, all the paperwork's in place?
Yep.
All right. Motion to approve the commercial garage licenses, renewal.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor can only signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed or voted. Our summer meeting schedule, we will meet July 8th at 10:00 a.m. here for the purpose of doing statutorily, we have to transfer monies between accounts before July 8th. And then we, whatever other matters, ancillary matters, as we heard, we'll have a report for the July 8th meeting on the presidential drive enforcement provisions and any minor issues that may come. Otherwise, we will be back on September 9th. And then we will be back on regular schedule, so to speak. There's a couple of holidays. In October, we have a holiday, but, and in September, we may have a conflict on the 23rd, we may have to meet the 30th, but we can discuss that. For our purposes, that's down the road. Our next, our meeting after July 8th will be September 9th. In terms of, I had asked, the town manager had asked, the veterans agent had approved with the Veterans Council a policy on, Purple Heart policy on naming streets, and I approved an amended agenda, which is before you, there was a policy that was passed out.
Yeah. You should all have it.
And-
We knew you had it.
The town manager and I had discussed this with the veterans agent.